Roaming around now, can I get comfortable?
Not yet.
Or not.
Or not. All right. Okay. Called the meeting to order. As always reminded at the beginning of the meeting, please turn off your cellphones and other electronic devices. If you need to take a phone call, please take it out in the hall, please take it outdoors. There's no public hearing today at this meeting. There are no minutes to approve. And before I go further, let me say, welcome Denise to your first official select board meeting, well, full select board meeting, I should say. We had a short one.
Thank you.
After the election. So announcements, there is a board meeting on July 8th at 7:00 in this room. There are no workshops scheduled. The town office will be closed on July 4th for observance of Independence Day. And on July 9th from 8:00 to 9:00 for employee safety training. There are various committee openings which can be found on the town website and are also in the agenda. So the next thing on the agenda is agenda changes. And I would like to say, before we get into agenda changes, that we have an announcement that we want to make, that this is the last select board meeting for our retiring town manager, Rick Bates. And the town had a retirement party for him last week. And we all thank, thank you for your dedicated years of service, six years of service to Rockport. And this is not a surprise, Rick was presented with this plaque. And at Rick's request, there's going to be a tree that's donated by the town to the library site in his honor. And the plaque says, "In appreciation from the town of Rockport to Town Manager Richard C. Bates, retired June 30th, 2019." So, Rick, thanks very much. And board members, if you'd like to, if anybody wants to add anything, please do so.
Well, Rick keeps saying he's going to leave, but every time I turn around at a meeting, he's here.
And I got one more of one of my favorite Myth Go Solid Waste. You're going to love those.
Oh, that's right, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah. But, but thank you very much, Rick. And we were very grateful for all of your dedication and
Thank you.
... great efforts on behalf of the town over the years. And we look forward to your efforts as a library consultant for the next year.
Me too.
And, and any other items as assigned. Okay. So with that, let's move on to other agenda changes. Drew had informed me that, had requested that we not address agenda item
H.
H, thank you, since I had my page backwards. Agenda item H under new business, which is the Opera House fee schedule. He's going to have it ready at the, at the July 8th meeting, but he said that there was some additional information that he wanted to include that didn't make it into this, this meeting's packet. So I told him that that was fine, that we would do it in July. The other item has to do with F. And I looked to the will of the board on this. Originally, I was, I was planning on having all town committee appointments on this agenda, on this agenda. It turns out that we still have some agenda, or some committee
Vacancies.
Vacancies, and also some applications that are coming in on several committees. So we don't have everything before us. So I am suggesting, what I would have done under that circumstances with respect to F, I would have just reserved the reappointment of committee members with expiring terms until we had everything in front of us. But I threw it out to the board.
Remind me again how many openings there are and how many want to be reappointed?
Well, you can look at the second page of your agenda for some of those. We have a number of vacancies on, well, the Parks Committee.
With regard to F, I guess.
Yeah, well, we have a number of them with respect to the Parks Committee, Planning Board, ZBA, and there might be more, but
As liaison on the Planning Board, I've talked to them, and they would like to have a little bit more time to work through this and make sure they have a good group. And also the same on the Rockport Beautification Parks Committee, we have some people coming forward. We'd like to have, give them time to get their applications in and do it all at once. I think there are enough unfilled spots with a lot of wheels in motion that it probably wouldn't hurt to put it off for a month or so and let, just get it all done at once instead of piecemeal.
These, these, may I speak?
Yes.
These positions all expire on the 30th, correct?
That's correct.
So a few more days. We've got 18 people that have said that they would like to re-up. Is there any harm in approving those that said they'd like to re-up and then as new people come forward and new positions are filled, we can approve those at the time? I guess that was be, that was my direction of my question, I guess, is how many do we have that want to re-up? How many are open after they re-up? And will that lessen our burden on the 8th of July?
Denise?
I think it would be helpful, and maybe me as a new member in particular, to sort of see who's, who wants to re-up, who wants to apply, and sort of start looking at our committees sort of in a holistic way, where we really are looking at who could be on the committee and knowing their backgrounds and what they can contribute. So I guess I'm in favor of postponing till the 8th to sort of make sure we've got the whole landscape we can look at.
Anyone else? And I would, yes?
The only downside I see
Turn the mic. There you go.
Not reappointing committee members if any of those committees have a meeting schedule, they don't have a committee
I was going to go there.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that, I think that there's no harm in saying that any, with respect to any current committee members that wish to re-up, that we should just extend their terms until, until we make the decision, which, you know, I would suspect probably needs to be on July 8th, we need to do it soon, if we were not to, to go forward today. But there would be no reason to not just extend them until that period of time, until their, the decision's made.
Saying for those that wish to re-up, extend for another month-ish?
Extend, well, it's July 8th. We're talking two weeks.
To the next meeting?
Yeah, to the next meeting.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend going much longer than that.
No.
You know, you're going to run into meeting cycles, as Linda pointed out. But by the 8th, you know, it's, the week of the 4th, there's nothing going on.
I think there's been a lot going on in terms of, you know, retirements, new town manager decisions, all kinds of things that have, you know, gotten us a little bit perhaps behind the eight ball in really addressing the committees.
My concern is, we have a whole lot of vacancies. I just don't want to see us lose anyone.
Sure, we certainly don't want to lose anyone. And it also gives us some time to try to fill some of those vacancies.
Have we, have we had anything that would require us to, to wait? I mean, has there been any, any of
Well, I think
Bad news, I guess? That would be, I mean, why wouldn't you want to?
Well, because I understand that we've gotten some applications in, or we've gotten indications of applications that are coming in. And we may, in some committees, have more people apply or want to renew than we have seats. So why wouldn't we want to look at that holistically? Okay. Any more discussion?
Okay. What, do we need a motion?
I need a motion to either
I move that we table our reappointment of committee members who have terms expiring on June 30th, 2019, who have agreed to serve another three-year term until the July meeting.
July 8th.
July 8th meeting.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Roll call.
Kelly, no.
Mr. Hamilton?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Please.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Angela Lovrenbrook. I live at 67 C Street in Rockport, immediately next to Walker Park. About two weeks ago, a few days before, my six grandchildren, all under the age of eight, were set to arrive from all over the country for a week-long visit. I walked by Walker Park and saw the posted signs warning people of the health dangers of the brown-tailed moth infestation. Prior to those signs, to seeing those signs, I was blissfully unaware of any problem with caterpillars or moths or anything. I quickly Googled the term and realized immediately that my grandchildren are probably going to be housebound for the next week. We discovered then caterpillars on our deck and garage wall. And I also learned on the first page of the official Maine government website, a number of precautions that should be taken. I read everything that I could, all, on all of the main websites, and also learned that our entire region is in the red area, which means heavily infested. And that as early as 2017, and certainly last year during 2018, there was a lot of information about the rapid spread of these creatures and the problems with the hairs on the caterpillars. So you might imagine my surprise last Wednesday with my grandchildren all here, when I heard lawn mowers in Walker Park on a warm sunny day. I ran to the park, I asked them to stop mowing. There were two young men there with no protective gear on whatsoever who were mowing on what was the first warm, dry, sunny day in a while. They said they were just following orders, couldn't stop, so I first tried to call the landscaper, got no answer, then I called Town Hall. The young man who answered the phone said he had no idea what I was talking about, about any dangers with mowing on dry sunny days. He suggested I call Public Works. Called Public Works, told them what I had read on the Maine government website about not mowing on days like that because the caterpillar hairs were going to be blown all over the place. And they also said, nobody had ever told them that, they didn't know anything about that, they didn't know what to do, they would call the town manager. And then I called back and finally spoke to somebody else who said, yes, they would try to stop the mowing, but by that time, the lawns had been mowed. And so there were, the next day, many, many more caterpillars and certainly a lot more evidence of debris all over my deck and my home and my property. And four out of my six grandchildren, by the time they left yesterday, had rashes all over their bodies. So I think that the response from the town, that kind of nobody knew that they shouldn't mow or, nobody had any idea, they didn't ever see it on the Maine government website, was really astounding to me. I mean, I'm not a scientist, I don't know anything about bugs or pests or anything. I simply Googled, and it was right there for everybody to see. People should be wearing hazmat suits practically to mow on those days. So I have a number of questions. Why, or is there any organized coordinated effort to use the information and precautions that are plainly there on that official Maine site? What are the future plans to control these pests, which present a clear health hazard to children and adults and to those with respiratory problems? Why was nothing done in the early spring to control the webs in the trees? The need to do something was well documented and known elsewhere in the state? Are we coordinating our efforts with any surrounding townships in the area, since our area is in the red zone? What efforts are being made to inform citizens about mowing on private property and infested areas and other precautions? And what can be done in the next stage when the emerging moths begin to lay the millions of eggs that will be next year's crop? And I also want to know whether Rockport has applied to the, to Maine. There's a statute apparently, Title 22, that says that any township can request to be identified as having a problem that's a public health nuisance, which these things clearly are. Has Rockport asked for that declaration? And if not, why not? So those are my questions.
Those are for you, by the way. Those are some of the things that we were going to talk about.
Yes, this is exactly what I read.
Yeah. Yes, we have extras, so please.
Thank you. Thank you. Rick, do you want to take the first stab at this?
Yeah. She did speak to me, ultimately, it was me that made the call to Public Works. I'm, you know, was unaware that mowing was a, I mean, it makes sense when you think about it, but it wasn't something that we were thinking about, that mowing was going to be a problem. So we, I called Public Works, but by the time, as you pointed out, by the time that word got to the mowers, they were already finished mowing. What they're on orders now is, which is a bit of a problem, but it's, what we're doing is that they're, they're not going to mow again until there's a wet day, that there's, the ground is wet. And we did the same thing when we cut down the trees at the ball fields, we cut down the trees on rainy days. The challenge there is, that means the, the park is not going to get mowed because we're on a contract that they mow it once a week, and if they can't get in there on that day, it'll be the next week that they come in, and then the next week. So the grass is going to grow pretty long, pretty fast. Although this is the time of year that the grass isn't, you know, it's drier and it's not growing. But I was unaware of the mowing piece. This is kind of a moving target, as you know, we've been talking about it for a couple weeks. It's kind of, it's a moving, moving target that we're looking at, what other towns further to our south that have dealt with this for a year or two years, what they've done. Frankly, I don't, I don't see that there's any silver bullet out there that's going to fix the problem. I was, I went, I did go down today, and there are two rather large oak trees there that are pretty much defoliated.
Walker Park?
Yeah. One's right in front of your house.
Yes.
Directly in front of your, her house. And the other one is down at the front corner. And they're, they're, they're big oak trees. And they're, they're, the first one is about, I'd say, 60% defoliated.
One of the things that I, if I could, Madam Chair, the part, I think the answer still not has been given to a call to the town office, nobody knows what's going on. A call to the highway, they don't know what's going on, refer it back to the town office. Have the staff been updated or better informed to be able to point them, rather than getting handed around?
It's a moving, a moving issue that, that's developed over the past two or three weeks for us. It, as you know, it came up the last meeting.
I guess what I'm saying is, if somebody calls the town office and wants to know about it, wouldn't the most appropriate thing would be to point them to your direction?
No, if the question came in about mowing, it would have gone to Public Works. And it's why
Well, part, part of the issue here too, Mark, is that, you know, it's the select board that sets a policy. And we haven't set a policy. This has only come on our radar screen, really, in the last couple of weeks. We heard from the Conservation Commission and
Fully aware of all, of the history to get us to here, I'm saying
Right. Well, there isn't, you know, if we want to make a policy tonight and instruct the town manager how to do it, we can do that. But he can't just, you know, make this stuff up on the run.
And what we're talking about, I think, is responding. It would be good for the town employees to know that if they get a call, to send them to the town manager for a response.
Right, that's reasonable.
And that's, I think that's what I said, is to point them to Rick's office.
Well, then you're going to have the town manager dealing with every single call that comes in the door. And many times, if it came in and the person that answers the phone heard it as a mowing, a question about mowing, then it would go to the Public Works Department. You know, they, they're responsible for mowing. I don't know everything about, you know, the mowing, who's mowing, when, where. But when I did get the, when it did finally get to me, it was, you know, they are mowing, it is a dry day. I had no knowledge of that. I didn't even check to make sure it was there. You said it was there, I believed it was there. Called Mike right away, he called trying to get them to stop, and they had, they were already finishing. And I, actually, when I called you back that day, you said they were just packing up.
And, and let me just back up a little bit, just for anybody who's watching or watches in the future on this. You know, this, as Doug said, this only, rightly or wrongly, it only came to our attention as a board in the last two weeks. I mean, literally, it was right before the election and the annual meeting. So that was when I officially became chair, which, you know, which was June 12th or whatever. And, and I asked, I literally had found out about it within that day or the day before. So I put an emergency session on the agenda following our organizational meeting, which had never been done before, just so that we could address this issue. So for anybody who was at the town's annual meeting, they did hear about it, they heard us address it, we did, you know, we, we did raise it as an issue that definitely is something that the town needs to get on top of. And right then and there, we were focused on the rec fields, the Marge Jones recreational fields, because the bleachers were underneath some oak trees, et cetera, et cetera. So we took some action in order to immediately, somewhat remediate the situation or help the situation there. But we said that we were going to have to have this on the agenda and be on top of it. We have since talked to, I think, all of us in that eve, that evening as well. We'd heard from a number of folks. We have gotten this, this handout, which we should make available on our
It is available.
It is available on the Facebook page.
And the website.
And on the town website.
That's what I read.
Yeah. And so to, to alert people to it. And rightly or wrongly, we have heard that there's not much we can do at this point in time in terms of, and, and again, I'm not the expert here, I'm just telling you what we have been hearing, that there's not a lot that we can do in terms of injecting trees, et cetera, at this point in time. But there are some steps that we can take in the fall, and then again, in the spring. As to the reason why this was not on the select board's radar screen until a couple weeks ago, I can't tell you, I can't tell you because I don't know what I don't know. I only became, you know, we only became aware of it. As to the coordination, I certainly think that we should be alerting every, all of the employees at the town, so that when calls come in, they know how to properly respond to it, and they don't have to go through five different people in order to get a response. And also, they can be directed to, to the, to the town's website page or Facebook page for more information. We are in the process, definitely, of trying to decide what we're going to do in the fall and in the spring. And I hate to do this to you, but Bill Post is our new town manager, is, has had experience, some experience with the issue in his current position in Bowdoinham. And he's going to be very much, obviously, a part of figuring out what those future plans are going to be. So we're going to be, we're going to be in a
The saddest thing to me is that we own this home for almost 40 years, and we now live here full-time. The sounds coming from Walker Park are one of the greatest joys of our lives. There are no sounds coming from Walker Park now. I mean, parents pull out their children, they take one look at those signs and they pull away. So there is, that is a deserted area right now. The playset, the railings, the entire playground area is coated with caterpillars. There were hairs all over my car today that were blown there. So, you know, I understand that this is the first time, but on that government website, back as far as 2017, the growing problem was mentioned.
Right.
So glad to hear that there's going to be some actions going forward and
Right. And if you compare the maps, it's been, it's been moving up the coast. And so it hasn't really been that much of a problem or a problem that we were aware of until this year. Although it's, it's, you know, too bad we didn't realize it in hindsight, and then, you know, several of us weren't even on the board, so, at that period of time. I know, I have the rash, so I can, I can
I'm sitting here with Janu.
Yes, exactly. I didn't sleep at all last night. So I, you know, there, a lot of us have it, and, and we're definitely, you know, at this point, doing everything we can, and we understand.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Any other public comment? Thank you for coming, though.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, is the town manager's report.
It's not formally a report, it's the town manager's update. But today's, the update today is, the library stream work is nearly complete. I don't know if you've taken a look at it, but on Thursday, it was half done. On Thursday, when we had all of that rain, we had two and a half inches of rain. I think Rockport was the ground zero for the heaviest rain in that storm. We had two and, two and a half inches of rain, and it handled the rain flow perfectly well. Mary Ann Young reported that, for the first time in more than 10 years, that level of rain didn't end up in, in her basement. So they did some work today chopping out, there was a couple outcroppings of ledge so that there's a nice uniform, straight path for the water to flow. And the last piece, I thought that we were going to complete that today, the last piece is that in the bottom section, on the young side of the property, where the wall had started to cave in, we have to lay that back a little bit and put the same type of rip rap on that side of the wall. There was some, I had some thought that maybe that was unnecessary because the wall didn't look as bad as it did when it was closed up. But in, on further looking with Mike today and with Charlie, talking to Charlie, the, the idea is that if we lay it, lay back that side as well, where the water would potentially back up, we'll give it a little bit more reservoir there. And the, the idea is that if we lay it, lay back that side as well, where the water would potentially back up, we'll give it a little bit more reservoir there, um, and, uh, eliminate some further problems. Because there's further down towards the, um, the inlet end of the pipe, there isn't a wall there and there's just, uh, mud. And it, it, not mud, but dirt. And it could, if there's a, a lot of flow through there, it could erode that dirt away and that will be a problem for the pipe in the future. So, um, that has gone, uh, very well. The, the, the guy, Mike, that's operating the excavator is excellent. He's like a magician with, uh, painting, big, with big, huge, big rocks. I don't know how he does it so well. The concrete work is expected to begin, excuse me, on July 8th. They're gonna, the excavation will be done in theory this week, uh, this, by this Friday. And then they'll come in and start, uh, forming up founda, uh, footings and doing that work. That work is expected to take up to, up into about early October to get the foundation work done and all of that, all of that work done.
Sorry, um, Rick, do, with the stream and, and what's been done so far, do we, do we seem to be on target in terms of budget with the stream work?
No, the stream work to do the other side of the stream, remember, the stream work is gonna come out of this year's budget.
Right, right.
The stream work, there is a change order on that side because of, we had to do the other side of the stream as well.
Okay.
And so there's a change order there for another $10,000 for that side. But we're, we'll be-
Which would still come out of this year's budget?
This comes out of this year's budget and we're fine with that. So the West Rockport Fire Station, the bids came in for that and we're starting the site prep for that. That will be completed by the end of, uh, July. And that money comes out of the remainder of the bond money that we had for the infrastructure bond. So, uh, the plan is there that at the end of July, we will have a flat level pad site for a fut, uh, future fire station. You know, there's, uh, there's kind of a rough plan for a fire station, but that needs to get, go through the process of, the, the Select Board needs to be involved in that.
Does that need any type of town oversight with codes or planning or anything?
What, the filling in?
Well, the groundwork you were just talking about.
No, it's just, all we're doing is filling in our property there. Um, and, uh, it's just rough fill. You know, it's coming in, we're gonna end up with a rough filled pad site. But there's a lot of material that has to come in there, um, to get it up to level. And to get a site that's big enough for a fire station to be located there and all of the related, uh, um, traffic flows around there.
Are we doing the trucking or is it being contracted out?
Oh, it's all, it's all contracted. No, we're not doing any of it. It's, uh, all coming in, uh, it's all, I think it is, hate to say it, but I think it's JBI got the, won the bid, I think. I think it was JBI won the bid. So that work will be completed, uh, by the end of July. It has to be completed by the end of July because it comes out of the, that bond proceeds.
Can you, uh, just describe for me, um, the process that the next town manager might use, um, in keeping the Select Board abreast of progress on the West Rockport Fire Station? I, I sort of have a sense that, you know, it's sort of out there and people are talking about it and, but, you know, the Select Board really hasn't heard anything, haven't seen any even conceptual drawings. Maybe we're not at that point, but I guess that's what makes me a little nervous. I just don't know what's going on.
The, what we have so far is a site plan. Uh, we've got a site plan, uh, basically with a footprint of a building. But that's all just-
When you say "we"?
The, the, uh, planning committee for the fire station.
Oh, there's a planning committee?
Yeah, that's the fire chief and, the fire chief and-
I didn't, I didn't even know that.
Well, that was one of the goals of the, uh, the board, was to, to expedite that.
Okay.
So they've been, they've been kind of figuring out what the, the footprint that they need and for space. That's been established now. And now it would be a building committee would need to be formed so that the, the board can be involved in that decision-making of, okay, first, when are we, when is the town gonna move forward with this? And then how? And what is it gonna look like in the design and all that piece?
Linda, at our next meeting, could you bring the site plan so we can at least sort of see what they're talking about?
So we'll put that on an agenda-
Yeah.
Item, just so that we can see it.
The sidewalk in front of the town office, uh, beside the town office building and by the parking lot, that, those bids are due to be opened on the 25th at 2:00 PM. And, uh, the hope is that we can get that done, uh, fairly quickly here. The line painting is nearly complete. They were out there doing today, they were out there doing the yellow, uh, lines. The crosswalk, um, Mark, the crosswork, walk across Route, uh, 1 is actually ours. Your question was, uh, that's actually ours to be, uh, be done. And that's being contracted out through, I can't say the name.
Adolphson.
Adolphson.
Is that coming out of, uh, Highway's painting budget?
Yeah, that'll come out of Highway's painting budget. Uh, the sewer extension bids will go out soon. We're hoping for, uh, mid-July, uh, with those bids. And depending on a bit, uh, bidder availability, once those are open, we're, there's a possibility we could start in September, but everything would have to fall into place perfectly for that to happen. But, uh, it, it might, it could happen. The sewer inflow study, uh, more than four hundred of the 664 inspections have been completed. I didn't have today's numbers. Out of those inspections so far, they found fif, uh, six violations. Fifteen properties where they have to go back and actually, uh, do dye testing to make sure that either a, a, a cellar drain, a floor drain, or a perimeter drain isn't going into the sewer system. So that, that work is being done now. And, uh, we did discover nineteen properties that have not been, been charged debt service.
Excuse me, sorry. What was that about, turning cell phones off, Madam Chair?
Yeah, right. Nineteen properties that have not been charged debt service and also two properties that are connected and are not being billed. So we, when we did all of this, we've done all this work, so it has produced those two pieces of-
Are there any, are there any guesstimates based on what they've found?
No, at this point.
As to what reduction in volume that might-
No, not at this point. Letters, uh, are going out July 1st, uh, which, uh, will mean that we'll start fining people as of August 2nd. The, the last day will be August 1st. Um, gives them all, it gives them a full month to get in. The challenge is gonna be that once those fines start, they will start building up very fast. You know, at two weeks of fines is $1,400 in fines. And they will, they, people will come in here and they'll wanna come to the sewer commissioners and get that waived. But at this, at this point, that, this will be the third notice these peop, the eighty people we still have on the list have received.
So this is for the people who have not yet responded to set up an appointment?
Exactly, yeah.
After six violations?
No, no, no. It's only people who have not responded. Good point, that's a good, thank you Denise.
Yeah, and I, and I'm sorry if you said this and I missed it, but, um, for the violations, those, we are, um, Scott is going out and meeting with those people and we're, you know, we're helping them understand what needs to be done and et cetera, et cetera, right? We're not just saying, you know, uh, you've got a problem, take care of it.
There's a whole plan of, and they're, built into the wastewater budget this year is, there's an amount of money, I don't know the exact number, that Megan built in, so that anybody that this, the, the fixes more than they can handle, um, financially, that they have, there's a, a process where they can appeal to the, uh, to the sewer commissioners and get, uh, get help getting that work done. So, uh-
Do you have a sense that the people who haven't responded, are we fairly confident we've been in touch with them? Or they, they've received our communication or, and they're just ignoring us or?
The first two letters were not, uh, return receipt, uh, registered mail. This one will go out, return receipt, registered mail as well as regular mail.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna send both out. So, uh, you know, sometimes people choose not to pick up their registered mail, particularly if it's coming from the town and they know what it is.
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, the approach I've used in the past is when you send it out, registered mail and regular mail. If the regular mail doesn't come back, then it, at least we know. We haven't had anything returned to us thus far. So, uh, there, there's two places that it's gonna be a problem. One is when we start assessing fines when they haven't, when they haven't, um, at least called to make an appointment. I mean, they can call and make an appointment for, uh, late August, early September. All they have to do is make the appointment and that gets them off that list. And then the other place is when, this is the other thing that Mo, uh, Nate has expressed, is towns that are doing this, where they also run into a problem is not following up and not making sure that people are getting the, the things fixed. That they, they bend too much on that and say, that's why, having the mon, a little bit of money in there to, to help people get stuff fixed, saves us a lot of money. It's a small investment, but if it helps get a, get stuff fixed, uh, it's, it's worth it because it takes that water out of this waste stream. So, um, and, uh, Town Clerk Tax Collector's office is gonna be closed this Friday at 4:00 PM and then reopen on Monday at 9:00 AM instead of 5:00 and 8:00. That, that's to give them a chance to close out the year and for Megan to close out the year. We can't do it like we normally do, which is just close everything on one day because of the event at the harbor on Sunday is the last day. So there's an event at the harbor, so Abby will be collecting some money and that will have to be accounted for. And finally, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and, uh, for the support over the years and of the previous boards, this board and the town of Rockport. As, uh, as I finish up here, this is my last board meeting, uh, probably ever. And it's been, it, it's been a good run and I, I just wanted to say thank you all, thank each of you for your support and, uh, and thank you to Bill. I, I think we're, the town will be in good hands and, you know, it's time for me to move on. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue to work on what was my real love is to finish this library project.
Okay.
It's, it's really important for me to finish that and see that through. So thank you very much for that opportunity.
Thanks, Rick. I had one question. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, one quick question. At the last meeting, I asked if you would clarify for us the kind of discrepancy between the DOT sign policy and, um, the Select Board being able to, uh, sort of just simply say that we're not gonna have signs at the intersection of Route 1 and 90?
Ooh, yeah.
How's your last meeting going?
Bill?
Well, maybe before your last day, you could clarify that for us, 'cause, um, we, we have plants that need to go in.
Yeah, yeah, that's right too.
And there are more signs up there already.
It's, it's coming back to me now.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Also, Rick, um, uh-
I think he had another one.
Did you have a, another, another one, Doug?
Well, the West Rockport Fire Station, but we, we got that.
Did you got? Yep.
Rick, I know you've sent it out, but, uh, just to close the formality of it, at the last Select Board meeting, you mentioned that you would report out on the status of the transition document. And I know you sent us-
Right.
Information-
And I'm updating it, it, as we go along still. Great. I, I, you know, I, I, there's a piece in there about brown-tailed moths now. So, and I'm, I'm sure, I, I'm thinking as this week goes on, I'll have other things to add on there.
Also, the fiber, uh, fiber conduit question. You said that you had talked to Fletcher and you'd gotten a number on fiber per mile.
Oh, I didn't send that to you?
No, you said you were going to update us in the manager's update.
Ah, yeah.
So you'll include that, that in there?
Yes. I did get that, which I, I was actually, I have to admit, I was surprised I got that. Let me see if I have it. He did give a very clear con-
Um, the, the, this issue for, um, people who, um, who are watching or in the audience, um, uh, while we don't have an official policy of the board right now with respect to, um, broadband, uh, extending broadband to other areas within Rockport, one of the comments that I have been, um, continually making is that when we do have ground open, it's an easy, simple thing to put the conduit and run the fiber through it, um, in order to prepare those areas where we're already doing roadwork and so forth. So I wanted, um, to get some numbers on the cost of the fiber, which I know is fairly minimal. And of course, we can figure out the conduit cost. So did you find it or you just wanna?
No, I, it's not coming up in my search.
Include it and, or send it on, okay.
It's not coming up in the search.
This is a Telenon secretary and I apologize for it, but it's a public service announcement. I am not the doctor on the board. However, um, there is a spray that you can get for this rash in Kennebec Pharmacy and-
So the prescription numbers have gone up by 450%.
Oh, my God. And Jensen Pharmacy also has it. So you, but you do have to get a prescription for it. And I got mine today, but I haven't sprayed it yet. I haven't had time. All right, so, um, okay. The next thing on the agenda is the, um, is a consent agenda, which includes resignations of George Benson, Ames Curtis, Denise from the, Denise from two committees, um, Bill Chapman and Marcy Cassas. And, um, these are on the consent agenda so that we can do them hopefully, uh, in, in one motion. But of course, we would send out thank you letters, but I also want to make sure that we mention, um, that some of these folks have been on committees for a very long time and really, um, have, have given a lot of service to the town of Rockport. And we thank them very much for their service.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and the thank you cards to be signed and delivered for their service to be sent to each.
Second.
All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five.
We have cards, by the way, to pass.
We do, we do.
We oughta be passing.
We oughta be paying attention to the meeting.
I've already signed half of them.
Yeah.
All right.
I got them the other day.
There is no unfinished business, um, at this meeting. The new business, uh, the first thing on the, um, new business is the committee applications for Harbor Committee alternates. Now, does this, um, does this fall under the, um, the deferral to July 8th? Or is, or do we believe that we would go ahead with these two?
I would. You never know who you're gonna get between now and then.
Okay. I, is that agree?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that one because we don't have anybody-
We should be consistent.
They're just alternates.
Right. Wait a minute, you agree with going forward with those now?
You think, well, I guess I thought that's where you were headed.
I thought that, uh, Mark was sug, Mark, were you suggesting that we put it off till July 8th or go forward with it?
I would put it off, you never know.
Okay, okay.
It would be consistent with what we had.
It would be, it would be.
Okay, um, the next item is review and approve Select Board liaison assignments. You can certainly do that. All right, uh, so on the Select Board liaison assignments, I just wanted to point out that there were a couple. We talked about this at the, um, organizational meeting following the annual meeting. And I think we made those changes. One, one question I had, Doug, was there's the Library Building Committee that has two Select Board people on it. Correct? And we were, we had agreed that it would be Doug and Denise. But then it has the Library Committee. Was that something that you and Ken were both on or is that just one liaison?
Uh, actually, that was the one that just myself was on. So actually Denise probably shouldn't be there.
Okay, okay. And we only put it there in order to ask you that question, to remember to ask you the question.
So remove Doug from the, uh-
No, no, remove Denise from the Library Building Committee.
From the Library-
Committee.
I'm sorry, yeah, the Library Committee, yeah.
Library Committee, and she stays in the Library Building Committee. Okay, um, the Midco Solid Waste. I think we agreed that, um, that Owen would continue to be on that with me. Is that right? I think Owen's term is up, mine's not. And he would like to continue to serve on it.
He just, he just doesn't, he can't, doesn't have time to be chair again.
Right, right, yeah. All right, we, um, we have, um- All right, we, we have, we had put Denise on several committees, or she had volunteered for several committees, and we gave her the opportunity to decide if she was going to be overburdened, and so have you come up with a conclusion there?
I think I'll be fine. I guess, I think I'll be fine.
Okay. All right, and then Parks Committee, we have Mark Kelly, and Rockport Beautification Committee is Doug Cole. And I have gotten some emails from some residents, and we've, in the last couple of days, about the overlap of these two committees. The Parks Committee, I think they've kind of all resigned or just about all resigned, so I'm just wondering if you guys can enlighten me with respect to the difference between what the Parks Committee does and the Rockport Beautification Committee, and are they, or should they be one and the same, or what?
Yes, I mean, I've talked to the various parties involved, people on Rockport Beautification, gotten letters from the Parks Committee, and to be honest with you, you know, I think with the Parks Committee sort of dissolution, I think probably we can wrap this all into the Rockport Beautification Committee. I've got four or five people that are very interested in taking over those roles, and they should be getting their applications in within the next week or so, and so that would be my recommendation to the board as the liaison.
Mark, do you have a comment?
An opinion? Yeah.
Yeah, we just did away with your comment.
Well, I mean, I think part of it is the new kids in town, the beautification group got all the glittery shiny things and all the attention, and, you know, the Parks Committee over the years, through whomever's fault, has been the redheaded stepchild who has asked for things, never gotten things, they didn't know that they even had a line item in the budget. So, you know, they were a little happy when they learned that, and there were things that were starting to progress, and I just think that they're, you know, they feel a little slighted, so I'm disappointed. I don't know as I would, you know, personally, I, the Parks Committee has been the Parks Committee as long as anybody's ever been around, and to change it all of a sudden is, you know, maybe we ought to call it the Parks Committee instead of the Beautification Committee, the Parks Beautification Committee.
Well, one thing.
But that's my.
Yeah, I don't care what it's called.
That's my opinion of what I think I've heard.
And the Parks, the Parks Committee, the Parks Committee, I think, is one of those standing committees, right, that's in the town charter? So if we do this, if the two get merged or whatever, we need to make sure that this is the entity that is recognized in the town charter that we need to have.
Sure. Well, we can certainly have the people all apply for the Parks Committee, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter as long as the work gets done, which it's, hasn't really been getting done, but, you know, I think we, again, it's sort of an opportunity for, to get some people in that are interested and would like to see things move forward. You want to call it the Parks Committee?
Well, I mean, until the charter's changed, we can't really change anything anyway, so.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I don't know that you can't, as long as we make it clear on the record that that's what it is, I don't think that we're tied in the charter to always call it exactly this title, but as long as it's clear, you know, so it's up to the board to decide.
So what's the rest of the board just thinking about this, because we've had our two cents' worth?
I would like to see one healthy committee.
Yep.
Out of those two. What we call it and how it gets there is, those are the details.
Denise?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think, you know, the idea of Rockport Beautification, as I understood it, was it was sort of going to take care of all the other places outside of the parks, leave the parks to the Parks Committee and engage in other things throughout the town that enhance the beautification of Rockport. But I think, you know, really, the Parks Committee mission sort of includes all those other spaces. They just weren't doing that.
I already know that.
So I think there's lots of room with a good new committee to really develop their mission and take care of both.
If we went that way, then we could call it the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee to take into account what you just said, that it's parks as well as other areas outside of the parks.
Yep.
I sort of like that, because it does get broaden the scope.
The, one of the issues that we have facing us is that, you know, there's actually a lot of work that needs to be done that really hasn't been done in the past in terms of taking an inventory of all of our parks, try to understand what they need, and then begin to work that into the budget next year, or this year for next year, and that's going to take a fair amount of work that has to be done, but probably even more pressing than that is we need to have a group of people who can sort of get the town moving forward on the Veterans Park, because, you know, obviously, that's going to have to be reconstituted when we finish construction, and believe me, it's not too early to start thinking about that and planning for fundraising and how that's going to be done. So whatever we do, I think we're going to definitely need to get some people together and get working on this stuff.
And so would you, are you saying, Doug, that you would expect that the, if we were to combine these two committees, that that combined committee would be addressing Veterans Park, or would it be, are you talking about a different group of people addressing Veterans Park?
I think that would just get thrown in with all the other parks.
Yeah. That's a good thing, rather than too many committees, more than we have. So do we need to take a motion on, I guess we probably should, on combining or not these two committees then? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we combine the functions of the Rockport Beautification Committee and the Parks Committee.
I would second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's five zero. And as far as the title, you know, as I said, it could be Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee, if you like that. I don't think we need to take a vote on that. It's kind of long, but it's descriptive.
I guess that group that you're.
Yeah, let's see, try to get them together.
I was going to say, we can always change it, yeah, it's not, you know, change the title.
Yep.
I do have one question, and Marcy, Marcy Cassas, when she submitted her resignation, she raised the fact that the, sorry, the name of her effort with the, it's very similar to the.
Keep Rockport Beautiful.
She brought Rockport Beautiful. She said that that was now being folded in under Public Works and wasn't part of the Conservation Committee anymore.
You know, yeah, this was very early on, and Marcy, or the original, well, it's a long story. Maggie Timmerman had this group called Keep Rockport Beautiful, and their mission was to do the roadside trash collection, and I got involved with that with Maggie, and that's when the concept for Keep Rockport Beautiful Committee came forward, just, you know, in addition to roadside trash pickup, it would sort of do other things around town to keep things tidied up. And with Maggie's blessing, we sort of adopted that name and then worked with Maggie. In fact, she was on the committee. I think Marcy had some problems with that because the actual Keep Rockport Beautiful name was under the, Rockport, was under the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So, actually, I read her letter, and I wasn't quite sure, sure what the implication was, but my understanding now is the Rockport Conservation Commission is going to get out of the roadside trash pickup known as Keep Rockport Beautiful and just have the town Public Works.
Handle that.
Help and handle it.
And that's where it lived initially, and then it migrated over to Conservation, and now it's moving back.
And that's the way I read it. I didn't read it as a solution.
No, not, not the name thing. No, no, that's the way I read it as well, but I, what I didn't understand, though, and I did have a brief conversation with her today, but what I didn't understand was, was I thought there was some concern that she had with respect to it going over to Public Works instead of being on the Conservation Committee, and I think that she said in her letter that that's the reason that she's not on the Conservation Committee now, or she's just resigned, was because of that move over to Public Works. And of course, she's always been very, very active in this.
Yeah, 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 she and Maggie, but who made that decision?
I don't know. That's why I raised it, frankly, because I have no, I have no idea who made that decision.
Yeah, she's been talking to me for a couple of months about wanting to move it back into the way it used to be under Public Works, and I think it may be just that the letter, the way the letter is worded, it makes it sound like it, that's the reason, but it's her initiative to move it back under Public Works.
Okay.
Because that's where it lived originally, and then at their, at their recommendation, they thought it should be, would be better served if it was under Conservation, and that's not working out the way they hoped, so they, now they want to move it back.
Okay. Well, if our understanding is wrong, I'm sure Marcy will set us straight.
Public Works is still involved in it no matter how it happens.
The charter and the role of that, of that activity was to assist, if you read the mission statement of it, it's to do the things that we don't have the resources in Public Works to do, and that's picking up the side of the roads.
The trash.
And getting the trash picked up. So that's why it makes sense to fall under, there's a whole lot of close coordination between what goes on with Keep Rockport Beautiful and the Public Works Group in terms of scheduling, timing, trash pickup, road signs, the warning and hazard signs and all that kind of stuff. So it makes perfect sense to me for it to be lined up there.
In Public Works?
In Public Works.
Okay.
And it means one more meeting for Mike to have to attend when they're talking about it, so.
Yeah, okay, okay. Mark, did you have something you wanted to add there? I thought I saw you.
I'm nodding.
Waiting about down there.
I mean, that, that group, by the way, is a high-energy group, very self-directed, and I wouldn't want to see us do anything that would get in their way.
That's just what I was going to say, stay out of their way.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, and that's why I wanted to make sure they're happy.
The support they need and.
They don't ask, they tell me when I'm.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cleaning up on which roads and how long and what color the bag is going to be, so.
Great, okay. Just as long as they're happy, right? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I totally agree with that. Keep them happy.
Yes.
So you ready for motion, Madam Chair?
I was going to ask if there's any, we're still on committees, right? If there's any other changes or comments on the committees? Okay, Mark.
I move to approve the Select Board Liaison Assignments as amended.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is accept a donation from, from Midco Solid Waste Corporation in lieu of taxes.
Then Chair, I move to accept the payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $6,000 from Midco Solid Waste Corporation and to have us send a thank you card.
Second.
Okay, discussion? The only thing I would say is that recall that we're going to get a little less next year, because when they approve their budget, they reduce that amount to, I don't know, $4,000 something, I think, next year.
But they also are getting billed now by us for any work we do there.
Yes, yes. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Next item, discuss committee spending authorities. Rick, do you want to introduce this?
You threw that to me, huh?
Oh, okay, well, I'll do it if you wish.
I'm retiring. Well, we had, we had a situation where one board chair decided to make some expenditures that we didn't know anything about and put us a little bit over the budget in that line, and so I sent out a note to Deb.
Committee Chair, right, not board chair.
Exactly, Committee Chair, thank you. No, Committee Chair.
And I wanted, and it was suggested that we should send a note out to the committees.
Just reminding them of that.
Just reminding them that the committees don't have any spending authority, because obviously, we have to approve the budget, and we have to make sure that, you know, that everything that's spent is within those budget numbers and et cetera. So it really is the liaison that needs to, liaison and/or staff person that needs to approve any expenditures, and we don't want to single out this one particular situation because I'm advised by some others around town that this has happened in more than this occasion, and I would say that on behalf of the board, I think we, we should take some responsibility or accountability for this because we don't have clear bylaws that we have for the committees stating that. We're in the process of updating and making more consistent our bylaws, which hopefully we'll finally be doing soon now. And also, you know, we just need to make sure that the liaisons are clear with that and that there's, you know, we really appreciate the work that our committees do, our volunteers do, and nobody wants to diss anybody. We just want to make sure that there is better communication between the board and the committees.
Question on the draft letter, second paragraph.
Yep.
Is there a business need to have that there? It's implied.
I don't think so.
We've made our point in the first paragraph.
Yeah. Yep. Any other thoughts on that?
So you want to remove that paragraph?
I offered that up.
Without proper approval from the Select Board, committee members will be responsible for unauthorized expenses. Strike that sentence.
Yep.
That would be my recommendation. So the letter reads, in order that the world outside of this room know what we're talking about.
It's on, it's on the screen that they know.
Are you sharing that now? Okay, good. So on the letter that you see on the screen, my recommendation is that we strike that second paragraph, beginning with "without proper" and then ending with "unauthorized expenses." I don't think it adds value. We've made our point in the first paragraph.
Okay, ready for a motion?
All right, go ahead.
I move to approve the notice to all committee members as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No. Okay, five zero. Okay, the next item is reappoint town officers effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and we have a list of the current town officers.
I move to reappoint all of the officers on the reappointment list for a term of one year as presented.
Can I second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just one quick question. When do our contracts with the auditor and the town attorney expire?
We don't have a, the auditor, we have a contract for another two more years, I think. It's a contract that, there's a non-funding clause in there, but the, our lawyer is just an engagement agreement, so it's a year-to-year thing, it's every year.
So, my, yeah.
Yes, I didn't even notice that. Thanks, Doug, for pointing that out. I don't know how I.
My question is.
You have to appoint him every year.
Yeah.
But we have an agreement with them for, Megan said the other day, it's for three years, but you have to appoint him every year.
By appointing, are we casting anything in concrete that we can't change if we so desire?
Well, before you answer that, this is why we have on here contract renewal discussion, because we wanted to discuss, and so I didn't realize that these two were on here. Thank you, Doug, for pointing those, that out. I thought it was all just staff people.
Yeah, amend it. You can pull those to us.
Retract and amend the motion.
Because you're going to discuss those two.
Okay, well, all right.
So do.
Motion as presented with the exception of the town attorney and the town auditor.
And adding Abby Leonard's Assistant EMA Director. Seems how she's getting paid a stipend for it. We ought to have that as part of the title.
Um, and Jason is the EMA.
Jason ought to be the EMA.
Director.
Director. You getting all this, Linda?
Do you want to take both EMA Director and the Assistant on?
No, we want to add them.
Add Assistant EMA Director to Abby Leonard and add EMA Director to Jason Peaslee.
He already is.
Where does it, oh, has he got two? Oh, he's got two entries.
So we need to add a new entry for Abby as EMA Assistant Director.
Yeah, to be consistent.
All right.
Do we need to restate the motion for clarity?
Yeah, I would, I would amend it with exactly the way you want it, just for Linda's sake.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my previous motion. Um, I move to reappoint all of the officers on the reappointment list for a term of one year with the exception of...
With the following amendments.
No.
You know, with, oh, okay.
With the exception of the town attorney, and the town auditor, and the addition of Assistant EMA Director Abby Leonard.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, uh, the next item is the reappointment, um, that we're, that we are deferring to, um, July 8th for committees. Um, the next item after that, G, is to reappoint two committee members who have a term expiring on June 30th to one-year terms, and I would imagine in the spirit of doing, treating this the same way we treated the others, that we would defer that to July 8th. And again, anybody who is on a committee currently should just be considered, right, on that committee until we address this in two weeks.
All right, I'll try.
Sorry.
I'll try. Motion.
I don't think...
Yeah, because we have to motion to defer, like we did before.
We didn't do it before.
It's a separate agenda, we did the three-year.
We didn't really reference in that committee, I noticed that in that, when we changed, made the agenda change, we, um, at the beginning, we didn't reference just F. The, the, the motion was for deferring all of the committees sort of holistically, committee appointments.
Did it need to be tabled or just?
Uh, deferring it till July 8th. So I, the, I think this is just tabled until July 8th, under that motion.
I was gonna say, 'cause the other one wasn't tabled, you just said we'll put it on for July 8th.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so...
And this is, we're treating this consistently, I think it falls under the consent, the agenda change we made in the beginning, because we didn't pinpoint specifically the subsections. Okay, so we're all in agreement? Okay. Um, the next item is the one that we tabled, the upper house fee schedule at Drew's request to the eighth, July 8th. So then the next agenda item is approval of the library consultant agreement with Rick And this is in your agenda, and you have seen it previously. And Rick is in agreement with it, so I think we just need a motion to approve.
Is it up on the screen?
Uh, no. Yeah.
So for those watching, um, this is the, as I said, the library consultant agreement for, um, one year with Rick Bates, um, and it provides for Rick to be doing certain, um, tasks, which actually there is a, an exhibit that we have seen before that was not attached I know to this, it should have been in the agenda item, and let's just not lose it as part of the contract, Rick.
Yeah.
There's an Exhibit A that lists the tasks, and, um, it provides that Rick reports to the new town manager with respect to, um, to his library consultant role. There could be other items, tasks that the town manager could ask him to, um, to address, uh, provides for his compensation, which was approved as part of the budget approval process, which is in the amount of $33,800. It provides for how those amounts would be paid and kept track of.
Do we have a copy of Exhibit A?
Do you have that with you?
I do not, no. I don't know how it could, didn't get, just lists, I mean, it's basically the same as in the contract, isn't it? It lists the...
No, no, Exhibit A lists all of the individual specific tasks, and it's referenced at the beginning of the contract. But you know what, this is not, you guys have seen Exhibit A, we have gone through it and, um, in our executive sessions, and so we're all aware of what's in Exhibit A. And there's nothing, um, there's nothing special in terms of the public, I mean, there's a, some of the things that were in the owner's rep, um, contract, like, um, keeping track of photos along the way of the progress of the library, uh, making sure that, um, emails are copied to the town manager, and then it's up to the town manager to advise the, the Select Board. Attending meetings, that he will be the liaison with the Library Building Committee, he'll be the liaison with the Select Board, he'll attend Select Board meetings where necessary are those portions of meetings, in which he reports on those items.
Neighborhood communications.
Neighborhood communications, very plain vanilla stuff, but it, it, it clearly sets forth those tasks.
Yeah, the Select Board has seen it.
Yeah.
As part of the public conversation, um, you described pretty much what was in there.
Yeah.
This contract will be available online? Is that how?
Sure.
These all work, so at that point in time, Attachment A will be included, so anyone from the public who wishes to see the content may refer to that online.
Absolutely. And only one person signs this, um, on the Board, um, you know, along with, uh, Rick signing it, so I, that would be me. So it's not, we're not, um, we're not gonna be messed up in terms of timing here because of, and our next meeting being July 8th, because Rick and I only need to sign the final with Exhibit A attached, so you'll make sure we do that.
All you need is the authority, the vote of the Board to go ahead and sign it.
I move to approve the library consultant contract, including, what is it, Appendix A?
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Do we need to, oh, I'm sorry, oh, just discussion, do we need to?
Okay, there, so first and a second, and now discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, do we need to include the approval for you to be able to sign this on behalf of the Select Board in that motion?
Think that's what you were just doing.
Can you repeat what the motion was?
I would just, I move to approve the library consultant.
Oh, yeah, and authorize the Select Chair.
And authorize the Chair.
Authorize Select Chair to sign.
Second.
On behalf of the Board.
On behalf of the Board.
Okay, I think we have it. All in favor? Doc, did you stick it?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. None, A's, five zero. Okay. Um, all right, the next thing is, aha, consideration of EMS contract. Okay, Rick, would you like to report on this one?
Yeah, so it's a long, drawn-out process of, uh, going through this, and we finally got, um, Butch from Northeast Mobile Health Services to just focus on an addendum rather than getting into a total rewrite of the whole contract, which was, uh, gonna be a very difficult process. He started that and I was able to get him off that and focus on doing an addendum, which is just change the minor things in the contract that needed to be changed. Camden was, the, the town of Camden was very concerned, there, there were some things in there that the town of Camden was very concerned on, um, and, uh, so in the end, Bill Kelly from, uh, from the Camden's Council was working with Audra and...
He doesn't have it.
And Butch, 'cause Bill Kelly has been involved in the ambulance process since back in the days when we were still working with Camden First Aid.
Camden's Council.
Yes, Camden's Council, yes. Um, and, uh, there were some sections in there that they've, they've changed, and what you have in front of you is a two-year agreement, a two-year addendum and a three-year adden-
No, no.
A one-year addendum, right. Camden, I believe, is only gonna say, sign, sign the one-year addendum. The two-year addendum is at the request of Lincolnville and Hope, who would prefer to go with a longer-term agreement. Um, so the, the two-year agreement, uh, is, you know, it's up to you, but I, I would think, you know, getting us to the one-year agreement is, uh, what we need to do right now. Um, so this, this has some places in here that Butch wanted in here that basically was focused at if any one of the towns decide to bail out in the middle of this agreement, there's a penalty, uh, for that. And initially, he, the penalty was a lot more severe than it is, and Camden was able to, uh, get them to, uh, reduce that, um, but I, the, the reality is, none of us, I don't think, none of the four towns are gonna be in a position of being able to pull out of this agreement in the next year anyway and go with it, an alternative.
So, I'm sorry.
All right.
To your point, to your point, Rick, and for people who are watching, since we don't have, I'm sorry, we don't have a copy of this contract available on the screen, but we got these this afternoon, um, and, uh, it's apparently, uh, we don't have, have it available, uh, to display. But, um, one of the, um, one of the provisions, number two, is what you're talking about, Rick, that talks about the penalty, and it says that in the event that a town, um, a town terminates without cause, so this is not for, for cause, it's if a town decides they just don't want these services, um, in mid-year, right? Um, and so they terminate without cause, then the town has to pay 80% of any remaining balance of subsidy owed by the town as liquidated damages to Northeast. So it's 80% of what's remaining, and it's only in the event of without cause.
And it's only for the town that pulled out.
Right.
That's correct.
So...
Not for cause. So, so that we can get on with conversation, um, I'd like to suggest a motion.
Yeah, we, yeah, we probably should do that, um, a motion, um, and then, but then definitely there's more we need to discuss then.
Well, let me start with by, I move to approve the Northeast Mobile Health Contract for two years as presented. We have two towns that have already, I'm gonna wait for that, but...
Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails for a second.
I make a motion to accept the, uh, addendum to the agreement bind between the Town of Rockport and Northeast Health Mobile Services, uh, for one year running from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, discussion.
So if we have two towns that have already decided to go for two years, and there's no way that any of us would be ready to do anything different before that timeframe, why wouldn't you want to have some, uh, security for the people that are providing a service to us?
When you say no way, you think in the next year we wouldn't come up with any?
Correct.
Possible option?
But I, I don't know that. I, you know, I know you've been on the ambulance committee, and now I'm joining you on the ambulance committee, and I don't know the, if, if, if that's an accurate statement.
Well, considering the rate that we've been able to get peo- people to meetings, I'd say that probably you're, you know, I'm, I'm a safe bet.
I'm a safe bet, too.
Well, it's not us that we have to worry about so much as our neighbors.
I, I guess I wondered if there needs to be a critical mass in order for them, I mean, if we sign the two-year, but Camden doesn't.
That's, that's their choice.
Do we need a two-year contract out of that, or will they pull it and say, no, we, without Camden, we're not gonna do a two-year?
I think Rick knows.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a, I don't know where it is in here, I'm, I think it's under penalties. So if, if we get to a point where all, there's not enough, there's not enough there, um, you know, say, say it is just three towns, um, it's, and it would have to be the three towns of Rockport, Lincolnville, and Hope, because that, say, Northeast decided that that wasn't gonna work for them, um, they could get out of the, the second year of the contract, was my understanding, is...
Does that, it's in this agreement, is what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's under, it's Section 4.
I think you're right, the 1K, uh, it's two, Norman, 2K.
Yeah. 'Cause I, you know, initially when we, they started talking about this, I said, what happens if, if it's two and two work?
This is the original contract, that this is amending.
Don't want to be assessed, you said the whole?
Yeah, that's the penalties, though. Um, I think there is a provision in here that says that they don't have to go forward if all four towns, uh, don't sign on. And, um, and, and given the Camden, we only expect that Camden's only gonna sign a one-year contract at the most, I have to say that I favor only signing a one-year contract, because this has been, I don't know enough about what I, you know, about what, what's in the best interest of the town, um, at this point, and there's been enough controversy over it that I feel very uncomfortable committing the town to two years under those circumstances.
And Rockport and Camden make up, off the top of my head, I think about 75% of the call volume, I think it's, it's about that.
They're 41 or 3, and we're 28, I believe.
No, I think it's...
It's seven, a little over 70, I think the other two make up the 28% difference, 16 and 8 or whatever.
So I would assume then that i- if Lincolnville and Hope sign a two-year contract, then it's gonna be up to Northeast to decide at the end of the first year.
If they want to continue.
If they want to continue, and it's, of course, that's gonna also depend on whether or not Camden and Rockport re-up for another year or whatever, too, so it, it, it doesn't in any way, um, stop us from going forward with one year. And, and we did previously make a motion, or pass a motion.
I tried to get them to sign that.
For one year, um, previously, a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
So regardless of where we end up, there has to be a, a meeting set up in January.
Yep.
So that's something you need to put on your radar, Madam Chair.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna need to start meeting.
Oh, yeah, way, way before.
No, but I mean, there's one, the six-month piece.
Right.
Of that puzzle, where we have to notify them.
All this, what this does is allow us to move forward into the next phase of figuring out what the next steps are.
Right, and...
And, and still have ambulance coverage for residents of Rockport.
And, and that leads me to the, uh, a neck, another question that I had, because paragraph three of this addendum states that a new section, 8G, shall be added as follows, the Select Board of the Town of Camden shall make a reasonable effort to deliver...
That's just a mistake.
I assume that that meant Rockport.
That should, it's something that he didn't...
Because what do we, sign a contract to see what Camden's gonna do?
Yeah, he started, he started out with a contract for Camden and then, and then changed it all for each individual town, so that's one that he missed.
And then the next thing that I add, um, I wa, I think it's important to point out, is this, um, Section 2K that was referred to, um, in passing, which is important because the initial contract, and guys, I'm kinda just doing this based on what I'm, you know, what I've reviewed quickly, but not having been part of any of the meetings, but 2K in the contract, or not 2K, but 2D, E, F, all have to deal with the penalties for insufficient response levels, average response, response time, performance requirements, compliance requirements, response time penalties, all of those penalties... All of those penalties, I am assuming, which I know were very definitely fought over and, or debated originally in this contract, and I know when I was sitting out in the audience, I heard lots of discussion about, you know, about meetings to figure out, you know, whether Northeast was in compliance or not, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm not saying this in any critical way, I just want everybody to know that all those penalties that are laid out in this contract, this addendum is now saying that, I'm doing this for my own benefit as well as yours, "The town agrees that the penalties pursuant to this section," and that's the penalties I just mentioned, "assessed against Northeast shall only be assessed to the extent that all four towns remain under contract with Northeast. The town expressly agrees that in the event any one or all four towns is not under contract with Northeast, the requirements set forth in this section regarding penalties shall serve only as guidelines and goals, and that no penalties will be assessed or allowed against Northeast under this section." So obviously, again, Northeast has taken the position, I guess, that, you know, if all four towns are not on this contract, we can't be held to these response times, to these, you know, to these performance standards.
Right, because it will change if, if, if Camden decided to pull out, the whole model changes.
Right.
Because they're such a big portion of it.
So I, I just wanna make sure that we're all clear that that's what it says.
The likelihood of them pulling out is minimal. They're, they're planning it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're plan, they're, I'm thinking it's, they're gonna agree to sign it, so...
Any other discussion? So we have a motion pending to approve the one-year contract with Northeast.
That would be the two-year addendum. Wasn't there a two-year and a second?
That failed for no second.
There wasn't a second.
And so Doug made the motion for one year, and that's what's on the table and was seconded.
Madam Chair, you should make that, amend that motion if you can, to, to instruct the town manager to sign that once the Camden is, that, that Camden is taken out.
With the appropriate, yeah.
Right.
With the modification to paragraph three, Doug.
Yes.
Okay, so you agreed with that? Who seconded it?
I seconded it.
And you're, okay, with the amendment? Okay. All right, so what's on the table is approval of the one-year contract with the authority for Rick to, to enter into the contract with the replacement of, of the reference to Camden in paragraph three with reference to Rockport.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay, Mark Kelly opposes.
That would be for me. You're supposed to do a roll, I believe.
That wasn't the roll. I summarized the roll. Mark Kelly.
No.
Okay. Mark Kelly opposes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the last...
Don't say "thank you."
The last item under new business is contract renewal discussion. And we got into this a little bit in the prior agenda item, or one of the prior agenda items, and the, the idea, or my, my intention of putting this on here was the fact that, you know, I think that there might, I think that from time to time, it's useful for us to review our contract relationships. And one contract relationship that is up for, for renewal is, is that with our outside counsel. And, and I don't wanna single out the outside counsel, and I, you know, would like to know of any other contracts...
Just the first ones that came out.
Yeah, I mean, you've got auditors, we've got everything, some of the services that we require, what did we say, about a dozen or so?
Right, we've got a whole batch of them that are coming up. Diane has a whole list of them.
Landscaping.
I think, just out of good business practice, periodic review of contracted services to ensure the best value to the citizens of Rockport is part of our purview, and one of the main ones, actually. And we need to do it, set up a frequency to put out RFQs and RFPs, whichever way you'd like to call it, request for quotations, request for services, and do so.
And the, with the counsel, you don't need to actually send out a request for qualifications or proposal? Is that right?
We did that, we did that a few, three years ago.
But we don't have to, I don't think, under the purchasing policy. I would suggest that if you would authorize Denise and I, I just called them two of you, to begin some outreach to some other firms, that we could then talk to and bring those discussions back to the, to the board for review, as the process that we follow in that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, but again, I just wanna sort of reiterate what Jeff said. I've certainly not heard anything bad about Bernstein Shore and the job they've done for us. My interactions with them have always been good, but again, I believe it's our fiduciary responsibility to renew these contracts when they come up, and...
I agree.
So...
And I would say that we, we shouldn't just go talk to two or three or here and there. I think if we're gonna inquire, perhaps we do a broader reach.
And there's also the best practice around doing an RFQ, because that way you can guarantee as best you can that you're doing an apples-to-apples comparison, and that each of the, if you identify six people to provide a service, that those six are all getting exactly the same information with exactly the same request and are able to provide, quote, "If we do it verbally and miscellaneous people," I won't say miscellaneous, but if multiple people do it...
Misconstrued.
It could be, it could turn upside down quickly.
The last time we did it was, like I said, three years ago, and there was a panel that was put together that did interviews. We had four potential, we sent out an RFQ to law firms, we had four respond, they came in and did interviews.
We've got a panel.
Right, right. And we can do, we can do the RFQ process, that's fine. I, I don't, you know, we're not required to with professional services, is my only point. We're not required to. If we wanna do an RFQ, that's fine. I, yeah, I'm suggesting that Denise and I would certainly be on the panel as fellow attorneys.
I mean, the, Phil Saucier was, had expressed that he was available to meet, to come in and meet with the board on the 8th, and, you know, you can...
I, I think that's too soon.
Okay.
But, but in, I, I believe that, you know, that's too soon, we're gonna be getting our committees together and doing some other things on July 8th. I don't think that we're gonna be, you know, in a position to be interviewing firms that soon, but, but I did, as you know, in response to the correspondence between Phil and you and me, I asked Phil if they would be willing to continue representing the town on a month-to-month basis, you know, even though the, the contract is, you know, is technically going over the termination point, and he said that absolutely that they would be. So, we're not without counsel. Okay, so I don't, I don't think we need any motion on that. Okay. Next, wastewater commissioners, none this meeting, liaison reports. We can do liaison reports. I just note that the capital improvements, improvement draft minutes timeline were included in the agenda items, because I was under the mistaken impression when we were putting together the agenda that, that the, that group, capital improvements, was going to have a recommendation for us at this meeting, but then I was told it's not until July. So, any other liaison reports?
Planning board meets, I think, Wednesday, tomorrow or Wednesday, so there's no update We might mention that the RES, sort of work group, got again together, and we had a meeting, and it was nice, we had people from the press there, so there's actually been some articles in the newspaper, but basically, we discussed the various ideas that had come up at the town workshop, made some changes to our working principles, and are now gonna sort of buff up our requests for qualifications in preparation for sending that out towards the end of the summer.
We noted that there's, we need to, we need to do some outreach to developers and others that, you know, might be interested in the RES property, and we were going to put together a couple-page description between now and we thought the early August, so that any conferences that the new town manager might be at, he might be able to have a couple-page document that might be of use. So, any, any other liaison reports?
Denise, she must have something.
No, I don't know.
That's a lot of wax, poetic.
All my committees, and I have nothing to report.
Midco Solid Waste has a meeting on Wednesday, and they have an executive session. I've reported before that there's two candidates that we have spent some time with, quite a bit of time with, for facility manager. And I anticipate that at that executive committee session, there'll be discussion about who the board wants to select as manager. So that's due after tomorrow.
Please.
Okay, there's nothing else. The next item on the agenda was a very brief executive session to discuss a couple of personnel issues. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion. We go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, several personnel matters pursuant to one MRSA Section 4056A.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, five zero, no nays. And a motion, oh, we can't do a motion to it, Jim, we have to come back.
No, we gotta come back.
Right, okay, great.